Board meeting for the City of New Brunswick for August 28th, 2017. We're all ready to go.
Madam Chair.
Okay, vote call.
John Bogart, Evelyn Escona, Charlotte McNair, Doug Sheen.
Here.
Peg Chester, John Zimmerman.
Here.
Ivan Adorno.
Here.
Trace Parrow.
Here.
Susan Gulliget.
Here.
John Cox.
Here.
Nancy Pol.
Here.
Public announcements, open public meetings act.
Please be advised that notice of warrants to open public meetings act applies to satisfy the annual notice, be sufficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of vote call meetings of board of adjustment, the city new Brunswick has been placed in a file with the city clerk to place appropriate board of work lobby at city hall, semi fire treated busting in Jersey, and some transportation to the official newspaper, the city of New Brunswick, the home of Tribune and Star-Louders.
Blue to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the boards, July 24th, 2017, meeting.
Madam Chair, members of the board received copies of the minutes in their packets. Unless you have any additions or changes, a motion to approve being ordered. How many go up to approve? Second. Call favor. Post and post.
Communications and reports, resolutions of memorialization of approval, Crown Plaza, LLCZ, DS-2015-10, extension of time to file the deed of subdivision associated with the approved site plan, subdivision and variance application for the construction of a mixed use building located at 364 Somerset Street, block 425, block 14 zoning district C-2A.
Madam Chair, members had an opportunity to look at the resolution filed to a meeting when you have big changes or additions, a motion to approve being ordered, the first eligible to vote are Mr. Cox, Mr. Parrow, and Mr. Sheen. How many go up to approve?
I'll second.
Doug Sheen.
Yes.
Trace Parrow.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Okay, Falcon Teddy, Rep. Carishin.
Right.
Okay, Z-2016-12, variance application for the conversion of a previously approved single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling located at 233 George Street, block 126, lot 2, zoning district C-2B.
Madam Chair, we had an opportunity to look at the resolution. Changes, a motion to approve is in order. Again, Mr. Cox, Mr. Parrow, and Mr. Sheen are the eligible voters. Motion approved.
I'll second.
Doug Sheen.
Yes.
Trace Parrow.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Okay, new business, T-Mobile Northeast LLCZ-2017-09, site plan and variance application for the installation of telecommunications equipment on the roof of the existing building located at 77 Truft Avenue, block 171, lot 1, zoning district R-5A.
Thank you, Chairman, Chairwoman. Julie Mc, Jennifer McNair from Price &amp; Schellman in Birmingham, on behalf of the applicant T-Mobile Northeast LLC. T-Mobile Northeast LLC is licensed by federal FCC to provide wireless communication services throughout the state of New Jersey. We currently have deficiencies in this specific area of the city of New Brunswick, and we propose to address it in this application. Subject site is located at 77 Truft Avenue, also known as block 171, lot 1, within the R-5A single-family and two-family residential, zoning district of New Brunswick. The property is presently owned by Kevin Malti Management LLC. Specifically, we are proposing 12 panel antennas pole-mounted to the top of the building, four microwave antennas, 16 remote radio units, and an 8-by-15 rooftop equipment area platform with associated equipment to be located on the lower roof portion of the building. That will leave you five equipment cabinets. We're also proposing stealth screening wall around the antennas and equipment, this will be approximately six feet tall. We're also proposing a stair access ladder proposed on the rear of the building and utilities to be located in the basement. In relief specifically to the request of this evening, this is my request for approval and use variance along with front and side yard setbacks to maintain the building and facility will set back to the front and side probably warrant. We're also requesting a rear yard setback to prevent the access ladder to be 4.4 feet from the rear. We do have Middlesex County Home Board exemption for this application. That's dated June 27, 2017. We've received reports from the city planner dated July 12 and August 22, as well as a report from the city engineer dated July 18, 2017, and we met with the TRC on July 19. I also received a report this evening, it's the staff report, you can call it, dated August 28, 2017. I have witnesses before witnesses this evening, and before I put the testimony, I just want to confirm notice of that.
Do any board members have any comments looking at this application?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have reviewed the notice, it is appropriate, and this board does affect our jurisdiction of the application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. My first witness this evening is Mr. Josh Kottrell, CO-T-T-R-E-L-L.
And do you swear by the proof of this letter?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Kottrell, would you please provide the board with the benefit of your qualifications and experience.
I have a bachelor's in science in civil engineering from Rutgers University, have approximately 15 years of experience preparing site plans, last 10 years specifically towards wireless communications facilities. I've testified to numerous boards throughout New Jersey, and I hold a valid professional engineering license in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you, we'll accept your testimony. Thank you very much. Mr. Kottrell, if you could add the plans that you had submitted?
Yes.
And if you could provide a word for the date of the petition?
Sure, this is last revised August 15, 2017.
Did you want to mark those in?
They did, they were the plans that were submitted.
Yeah, just refer to the sheet that you were testifying about.
Sure. I'm just going to turn to sheet A-01, which is the site map on notes. Subtle properties, block 171, lot 1, consists of a 1,750 square foot property. On that property is an existing brick building. The majority of the building is three stories, with a smaller portion of the building that's one story. It's located on the corner of Stewie Dam Street and Truft Avenue. Just going to flip to the next sheet and explain what T-Mobile was proposing to install. So on the three-story portion, on the roof of the three-story portion of the building, T-Mobile is proposing to install four antenna sectors at each corner, each one of the four corners of the building. Each antenna sector consists of three panel antennas, which are approximately a variance size, the tallest one is six feet tall. Also in each sector, they're going to install what they call remit, remote radio units, which is about a 17-inch tall box-looking mini cabinet, and also a microwave panel antenna. The antenna sectors will be screened by a RF, radio frequency transparent material, sort of like fiberglass-type material. The exterior of that will be designed to match the building facade. On the lower one-story building, T-Mobile is proposing to install a steel equipment platform consisting of three radio cabinets, an electrical utility cabinet, and a fire management device. Access to the one-story building will be through a proposed exterior cage ladder from the ground level up to the roof. Access to the three-story roof, where there currently is no access, they're proposing to install a pull-down stair, attic-type stair on the third-level landing. The only utilities that are required are electric and telephone. And I'm just going to switch to sheet A-04. We've contacted PSCNG to determine what their requirements will be for the electric service, for the T-Mobile's electric service in here. We have not heard back from them yet, but based on previous applications that we've performed in the PSCNG service area, their new, their new rules, they want the carriers to upgrade the existing service. So what we show in this basement is an upgrade to the existing service with four spare utility meter sockets and one proposed T-Mobile utility socket. The electric conduit will be routed from the basement to the exterior of the building and up the exterior building facade to the equipment. Those utility conduits will be painted to match the color of the exterior facade. The other utility that is required is telephone. For this new technology, connection to the telephone system is through fiber optic cables. Right now, there is no fiber optic cable for T-Mobile to use, which is the reason for the microwave panel antennas, and these are temporary until the fiber optic cable can be installed. Access to the site by the T-Mobile technician is once every four to six weeks, and will use the street-side parking to access it. Construction of the site will require cranes with a steel to haul the steel up to the roof. That will require a temporary sidewalk and potentially a partial street closure. That will have to be coordinated through the building department, I'm assuming. I don't know if the New Brunswick has a preconstruction meeting that the contractors have to attend, but that can all be worked out with them, and they'll file for the necessary sidewalk closing permits and street closing permits if necessary.
And your office prepared a structural analysis of this building?
Yes, we performed a visual analysis of the existing structure, and we issued a letter saying that the proposed installation will have no detrimental effect on the existing structure. If this application gets approved prior to construction, we will open up the roof at the steel bearing locations and do a further investigation of the interior walls to find their condition, and if that condition is not found to be satisfactory, the contractor will have to re-point, rebuild the brickwork if necessary. So we will do a further investigation of the existing structure at that time.
Thank you, is there any site letting proposed?
There is one work light that will be attached to the equipment platform on the one-story roof, and that will be provided with a on-off switch and usually a four-hour timer. If the technician does have to do work at night and forget to turn the switch off, the light will stay on indefinitely.
Thank you, and last, you were able to review the city plant and engineers' reports?
Yes.
Did you take exception to those?
No.
Okay, and what about this half report?
Yes, I looked at that too.
I have no further questions of this witness. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
My next witness is Adam Feehan from Piercons Solutions. He'll be testifying to the need for the site and coverage issues.
Can you raise your right hand, state your name to tell your last name for me, please?
Adam Feehan, F-E-E-H-A-N.
And do you swear by the proof of this letter?
I do.
Mr. Feehan, would you provide the board with the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
I have a bachelor's in science, bachelor's in science in electrical engineering in the New Jersey Institute of Technology. The past four years, I've worked for my current employer, Piercons Solutions, where I've been a radio frequency engineer, which involved attending many zoning hearings and representing various wireless carriers as the radio frequency expert. I've been accepted as an expert in many towns and cities throughout New Jersey.
We'll accept your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you just speak a little bit on our?
Sure, I know there's no microphone. I'll try to project better, apologize. Mr. Feehan, you prepared some maps for this evening, correct?
Yes.
And I'm going to just have you pull those off just to get ready to.
Okay. This first one is called a detailed site map, which you can mark as Exhibit A1.
Yeah, this was not previously submitted. Is there a date on that?
Yes, the date is 8/25/2017. This represents the proposed site location surrounded by existing T-Mobile sites. Does A1, correct? A1. The date is the 29th, 28th, 29th. So if we look at exhibit A1, as I said, you can see, it's kind of like a Google Earth view without the terrain, just shows the streets on a white plain background, simple to look at. You can see in the center of exhibit A1, the pink dot labeled NJ-8706A, which is the site ID of our proposed site tonight. And surrounded are existing T-Mobile facilities represented by triangles. Most of them are red, some of them are highlighted in yellow. The ones that are highlighted in yellow are the ones which serve the area that our proposed site is going to serve as well. The reason we want to serve where there's already service is because, as Mr. Bogart already stated, there's a capacity problem. What that means is the sites that are serving the specific area surrounding the proposed site, say for example between Renton Street and Jones Avenue, Delvin Street, Livingston Avenue, the users in that area are using so much data capacity, are using so much data that the surrounding sites can't handle it. The next exhibit after this one, I'll show you a chart, which is going to show you that the sites are maxed out, they're all the way up to 100%, which means that there's a good amount of people which are not able to use the service because there's none left. And we can quickly go to that right now. The next exhibit is a double-sided, it has four pieces, and we can mark it as one if that's all right.
Yeah, let's mark that as A2, and that's double-sided.
Yes, double-sided, it's four LTE 2100 capacity charts. Just so we're clear, there's three highlighted in yellow sectors, but I am showing the fourth, I just missed highlighting one. Sector two, the south, 8693A, should also be highlighted, it'll be shown on these next exhibits. So if we look at the front side of exhibit A2, if you look at the first capacity chart, the red line which goes across horizontally from left to right is at the 70% mark. The reason it's at the 70% mark is because it takes time to look for a new site, it takes time to zone the site, it takes time to build the site. So when a site gets to 70%, we start looking, as we can see here, we're already pretty far behind as we're all the way at 100% for this site. The yellow brownish jagged line, that represents the actual usage. So you can see most of it is up in that greater than 95% up to 100%. The things which happen when you exceed capacity of the site is the data speeds will slow down, which will give less than 4G LTE is supposed to, will give something closer to 3G, which is 10 years old, 10 times slower. The other thing that can happen is the technology can actually kick you off, the 4G LTE never backed down to the 3G, which has the same problems already. And the other thing which can happen is that it will just cut you off completely, and for example, when you're using your phone or whatever device you're going to use to access the T-Mobile network, you'll see your little spinning buffering, something that we always love to see, right? If we look down to the next, the bottom half of the front side of exhibit A2, we see another capacity chart, this one's for 8519A, beta sector, and same thing, we see it's already maxed out. We're coming late to the game here, so we're trying to solve the problem that's already happened. Usually we try to solve it before it happens. If we flip to the reverse side of exhibit A2, we see two more charts. Can let the charts speak for themselves, as we're well above the 70% line, up in the 95 to 100% experiencing those problems which I described earlier. So the purpose of our site is to be located in between all of those four sites which I just talked about, and help alleviate the capacity, which is a continually growing thing, as people are using their devices for more and more, as I am, assuming you will guys are too.
And so to the best of your knowledge, this is your most optimistic site, would you locate within the research area?
Yes.
And there were, to the best of your knowledge, no co-location opportunities in the area?
I did not find any, no.
And any of the zones in which this would be conditionally permitted won't fill the gap that you're proposing to fill?
No, I believe the one zone which was conditionally permitted was the I-zone, the industrial zone, and those were too far away. If we look at exhibit A1, they're, I believe they're off of the map, and in order to offload the four sites, which have been the three that are highlighted and the one on the south side which should be highlighted, you need to be located in between those four sites. And so to locate on the other side would be, wouldn't serve, wouldn't work.
Thank you, I have no further questions of this witness. Any other questions? Thank you. My next witness is Mr. Joseph Menio from Pinnacle Telecom.
Can you raise your right hand, state your name to tell your last name for me, please?
Joseph Menio, M-E-N-I-O.
And do you swear by the proof of this letter?
I do, I do.
Mr. Menio, would you please provide the board with the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
I have a bachelor's in information systems from NJIT. I have over 14 years of experience in the RF field. I have worked for RF design and RF compliance for all the major carriers. I have done public safety design systems for New Jersey and New York, including the 911 Answering Center, and we're around here, Howells Police Station, radios.
And you testified before the board?
Oh, before hundreds of boards between New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Thank you, we'll accept your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Menio, your office prepared a previously submitted antenna site FCC RF and accessory report dated May 8.
Yes, that's correct.
And you please provide the board a brief summary of what that analysis entailed.
That analysis entailed a set of guidelines that were released by the FCC, which is basically takes the most vulnerable section of your body for RF, which I believe is the eyes, and then it gets a safety factor level of how fast that part of the body dissipate heat, because that's how RF affects you. It's not like a radiation, they'll give you a tumor, it actually just heat you up and for lack of better words, kind of cook you from the inside. So they developed a guideline based off of how quickly the body can physically dissipate the heat between elderly and children, and then they made that factor times 10 to be the limit, and then within their calculations to give out to us, like myself, there's also a factor of five. So basically, it's 50 times over what the FCC continues to be safe. Moreover, it also takes in things that won't really happen, that it takes into consideration that the site is operating at max power and full channels, full capacity, all the time. It takes into consideration that there is absolutely nothing in between you and the antennas, and the biggest part is it makes your whole environment completely reflective. So that means if the RF signal is coming off the ground, it will bounce up back to what the same exact power that would come from the antenna, which that cannot happen unless you're inside a laboratory. And even with all that fudge factor involved, this site is still only 7.4801% of a level that goes up to 100, and even if you add 100, that is still considered safe. So clear and simple, this site is 13 times safer than what the FCC deems to be safe. Now, New Jersey has their own set of guidelines, which are for some reason less stringent than the FCC's, so they're about five times less stringent, and this site is 66 times below what New Jersey would consider safe for the average person.
And just to reiterate, is it your testimony that the total maximum emissions level is part of allowing exposure limit imposed by the federal or state regulations?
Yes.
I have no further questions of the testimony. Does anyone have any question? Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, I have the planner for this project, Mr. David Karlebach.
Raise your right hand, state your name to tell your last name for me, please.
David Karlebach, K-A-R-L-E-B-A-C-H.
And do you swear by the proof of this letter?
I do.
Mr. Karlebach, would you please provide the board with the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
Yes, I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Revue's University. I'm a licensed professional planner, and I have been for 23 years. I've previously appeared before this board on a few occasions.
And your credentials have not changed since you were here?
That's correct.
We'll accept your testimony. Thank you. And you reviewed certain documents and preparation for your testimony this evening?
Yes, I reviewed the city zoning ordinance and master plan. I had reviewed all of the application materials, including the site plan drawings. I had visited the site and the surrounding areas, and I prepared computer photo simulations of what this installation would look like if it were approved and installed.
And these were previously submitted, so I don't believe any to be marked?
They're part of the packet that we have currently.
They were submitted last week, but they were submitted.
We have.
We have, great, okay. All right, proceed.
Okay, very briefly, I'd like to talk about this neighborhood. It's predominantly two and two-and-a-half story residential structures. Yes, there is the Sacred Park Church diagonal from the street, and there are some schools in the area, but predominantly residential buildings with peaked roofs. So this site represents one of the few opportunities to locate antennas and equipment on a three-story flat-roofed building, which makes it ideal. And you heard testimony from the radio frequency engineer that there were no co-location facilities available, and there were no I-2 zones or I-2E zones remotely near the site. The nearest one of those zones is .57 miles to the west, which is well outside this service gap area, so that is insufficient. The engineer did a very good job describing what exactly is being proposed, so we won't get into that. This property is located in the R-5A zone, which is a single-family and two-family zone. Wireless communications facilities, as I said, are permitted on structures or buildings that already contain such facilities, in other words, co-location facilities, and they're conditionally permitted in those two industrial zones. So absent any of those opportunities, the applicant has now selected this building, which is a three-story mixed-use building, it has grocery on the ground floor and residential apartments above. Now, there are no changes proposed for the bulk conditions that exist at this property, there's no further improvements on the setbacks, and the antennas are specifically excluded from calculating the height requirements. Boards of adjustment are directed to use a four-step balancing test on hearing and deciding D-variance applications for wireless communications facilities. So I'll very briefly go through the four steps. The first step is to determine the public interest at stake, and the New Jersey Supreme Court has already instructed us that the mere issuance of an FCC license should suffice for a carrier to establish that a general welfare purpose is served. And T-Mobile is the holder of such an FCC license, so that in and of itself satisfies the first step of the balancing test. The applicant must also prove that the site is particularly well-suited for this use. And to demonstrate particular suitability, the applicant must demonstrate the need for the facility at this location, and you heard prior testimony from Mr. Sheen demonstrating that need at this location. This site allows T-Mobile to deliver its service utilizing an existing structure, which is a far superior alternative than constructing a new tower in this neighborhood, which would have a far greater community impact. And this site easily accommodates the use with minimal modification. It uses existing access utilities with no change- It uses existing access utilities with no change to impervious area or building area. There's no tree clearing or site reading proposed and no further improvements on the setbacks. It is ready fit for use as a telecommunications facility. The second step of the balancing test is to identify any detrimental effects that would ensue from the granting of the variance. And the courts have found that the negative criteria pertaining to telecommunications facilities generally implicates aesthetics. And here, I don't find any substantial visual impact as evidenced by the photo simulations. All four sectors of the antennas, the remote radio head units, the dish antennas, mounting hardware, cables, conduits, are all concealed by these stealth screen walls. The equipment cabinets that are going to be installed on the lower rooftop are also behind screen walls and they are likewise invisible to the color. The concealment devices will be treated or colored to match the existing brick building. And the concealments do help to visually harmonize the building with the neighborhood. It is not immediately recognizable as a telecommunications facility to the casual observer. I'll just briefly review with the board these photo simulations. Photographs one and one A are viewed from Sudan Street, approximately one hundred and seventy feet east-southeast of the site. And you can see, photograph one A has been altered to show those proposed screen walls at the front of the building. Photographs two and two A are from the intersection of Thruab and Townsend Street, approximately two hundred and seventy feet northeast of the site. But again, there you can see the proposed screen walls at the front of the building hiding the antennas. And the last view is from the vicinity of one thirty-one Sudan Street, approximately one hundred and thirty feet northwest, nor, excuse me, north-northeast of the site. And from this location, you can actually see the screen walls in the area of the proposed equipment on the lower roof. So I'll let the photo simulations speak for themselves. I think that certainly having the screen wall provides a supreme planning advantage and that you don't see any of the equipment or the antennas. Additionally, this is an unmanned facility, therefore there's no increase in the population or employment at the site. Requires very little of the way municipal services. It certainly doesn't require any water supply or sewer service, only electric service and telephone service, similar to a single-family home. And there's virtually no traffic impact associated with this use. Typically, a maintenance visit is scheduled every four to six weeks, so it's very passive use. Additionally, this facility will not generate any noise, vibration, odors, glare, dust, hums, or any other objectionable influences. It's a completely benign use. Third step of the balancing test is the board may impose reasonable conditions to mitigate any impact. And I think the applicant has already offered up those mitigating measures in the form of those stealth screen walls. And finally, step four is the board is to determine on balance whether the positive attributes of this application outweigh the negative. On the positive side of the ledger, we have many community benefits. We have availability to safe, secure, and on-demand wireless communications from this carrier, enhanced public safety through improved wireless communications, and increased work productivity and efficiency. On the negative side of the ledger, I couldn't identify any negative impact, so I'm going to suggest to this board that those public benefits that are derived far outweigh any perceived detriment. I'll conclude by saying this, I didn't find that there's any substantial detriment to the public good. There's no visibility of this proposed facility. The screen walls harmonize the site with the environment. It provides an essential public service to the public with minimal intrusion onto the neighborhood. And finally, there's no impairment of the zone plan. There was no opportunity to deliver the service in this area utilizing an industrial zone. And likewise, there was no co-location opportunities present in this neighborhood. I did review the two thousand and four master plan and the two thousand and eleven master plan reexamination report. And it doesn't specifically mention wireless communications facilities. And as I said, we did make an attempt to respect the ordinance. It just wasn't possible due to the location of this service gap. So I think the applicant has done the best thing. Put these antennas in a residential neighborhood, but in such a way so as not to create any harm to that neighborhood. I think the board should feel very comfortable in ranking this D-one use variance.
Thank you, Mr. Karlebach. I have nothing further of this witness. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the public. If there are any in the public who'd like to speak to the application?
Yes, Mr. Cradell?
Raise your right hand, state your name, spell your license, please.
Charles Cradell, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L.
And do you swear to the oath of allegiance, by your right hand?
Yes, I do. Good evening, members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity to address you. I, just for the record, I'm the editor of a community newspaper, New Brunswick Today, and I actually live in this neighborhood, right around the corner from here. Probably, probably be able to see a slight change in my view. And I'd like to ask, first, I definitely don't want to get cooked from the inside out, but it sounds like there were calculations done about the radio frequency. But what impact does the microwave antenna have?
So what impact, thank you.
So as I was saying before, the back hall is through fiber optic cabling. They don't get that right away. It usually takes about six months for the fiber optic cable to get installed. So if they do, they install the microwave antennas and they point it at a nearby site. So it's going to be from rooftop to rooftop. It's got to be a clear sight. So it's not, it's not going to, there's no obstructions in the way. So it's not pointing down into the street, it's not pointing into another building. It's pointing to another microwave dish on the rooftop of the site, so.
So just to be clear, there's no impact on cubic tell?
No.
You know, people on the ground, correct?
Thank you.
An RF compliance group?
Just a further follow-up on that. Microwaves are FCC excluded because basically, as he was saying, a microwave antenna is a very narrow beam width and it has to be directly focused on the point that it's receiving. Second of all, the power is maybe ten to twenty times lower than what these antennas are pumping out. So it's way less power, it's short, narrow, vertical beam width. And basically, the whole point of a microwave, if something gets in between it, it's going to disrupt the actual flow of information. So it's low power and it's very, it's like surgical. So there's really no worries or concerns with it. Like, actually, the FCC doesn't even recommend you to include them into the calculations because they really have no bearing. And I have done calculations on the microwaves and it maybe adds like a point zero 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 one or something to like a fifth or sixth power.
I'm sure, thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
And so I just wanted to just confirm for the record, it's about six months until the fiber optic hookup comes in and then it'll be, then the microwave won't be necessary anymore?
It sounds like that was the test.
Correct, that's the testimony.
Okay. And is there any, you know, what are the risks of fire? Really, do these things ever catch on fire?
I'll have a question if I got to my question.
No, all the equipment is, the equipment cabinet's in a enclosed steel enclosure. I've never seen one catch fire before, so.
Thank you. I think that's all. I know this, I'm not surprised the circuits are overloaded. There's a T-Mobile store just a block away and I'm not surprised. So wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else with the public that would like to speak?
The new one will close the public portion of the meeting. Does anyone have any further question? Mr. Patterson?
The chairman chair, if the board makes a positive recommendation, I suggest the following conditions. Compliance with the terms of the ER engineering report dated July eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Submission of all necessary easements or access, cross-access agreements for review and approval by the board attorney and city engineer upon filing the same. Paying a site performance bond amount to be provided by the city engineer. Submission of site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees amount to be calculated pursuant to Title sixteen twenty-four one sixty. Issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required. Compliance with the terms of the Bigwell Consulting Group report dated August twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen. Planning review escrow, planning for all anticipated post-proview reviews. Paying any other fees in the city of Brunswick related to developing a new set of projects. Outstanding, paying all outstanding taxes and order of sewer fees. Millsex County Planning Board approval or waiver, which the applicant said they already had a waiver for. Submit engineering site plans, comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. So our potential plans to comply with any change in the planning or engineering memos or any amendments offered at the hearing. That's it.
Anyone want to make a public statement? Okay?
Joe Cheen?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ivan Adorna?
Yes.
Chris Caparo?
Yes.
Sumagolik?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
Anthony Paul?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board. Hi, everyone.
Do you keep exhibits?
Yeah, eight point eight.
Robin and Heights Phase Two LLC Z dash two zero one seven dash zero seven. amended site plan and fine variance application for the property located at twenty-one U.S. Highway One, lot seven zero three, lot seven point zero two, building district six, seven block.
Members of the board, Thomas F. Kelso on behalf of the applicant, Robin Heights Phase Two LLC. As Madam Chair indicated, this application is fairly simple, straightforward, quick one. That calls for first, an amended site plan for the project that's been, it's been here several times, originally approved, going back, I think, to two thousand and eleven. And then we were back in two thousand and fourteen when we had the Starbucks facility approved. The reason that we're back this evening is to amend the site plan for one specific thing. And that is to provide for basement space under the residential buildings. So there's technically no change to the site plan, as you would see it, surface-wise, but it does require a site plan amendment for us to approve the addition of, it's approximately, I think, fifteen thousand square feet of basement space. The basement space is intended to be used for storage only. So, but it is a requirement for us to come back for that. At the same time, we're here to seek several assigned variances associated with Starbucks facility. As you know, Starbucks as a franchise has their certain requirements and requests of us. And we're here seeking several variances associated with the signs. First, there is only, in the zone permitted, one sign per facade and we're seeking multiple facade signs. Second, their facade signs are only permitted on the street-facing elevation. In our case, we're looking for signage on each of the elevations because there's different viewing points from the building itself. And finally, we're looking for various signs associated with the typical things you see in a Starbucks and other facilities that are not permitted in the order specifically. Things like menu boards, directional signs, the drive-through signage, Collins Bar. Those types of signs technically require us to receive a variance from the board. So that's essentially the sum total of the application. I'm going to present to you two witnesses this evening. First of all, Mr. Wallenbach, who as you know is the director of engineering for Edgewood Properties, which is the principal developer for the site. The plans have been actually signed and sealed by a licensed engineer that's in-house with Edgewood. And as I've indicated to you before, so there's no surprise, Mr. Wallenbach, as director of engineering, he's not licensed in the house, but we will provide him for testimony. And finally, we will provide testimony associated with the planning support for the signage. And that's the sum total of the application. If the board has no questions, I will call my first witness.
Just one, does anyone else have any comments for this application? Okay, please.
I think, I just, I just want to clarify, you said the basement is a storage only?
Yes.
One of the rooms had been designated as a yoga room?
I think so.
Can you all sort your?
Yes.
Raise your right hand, state your name, spell your license, please.
Sure, Ronald Wallenbach, K-U-L-E-B-A-C-H.
And do you swear to the oath of allegiance, by your right hand?
I do.
Mr. Wallenbach, obviously you are a employee of Edgewood Properties, I believe. I imagine you're the director of engineering. You've got a little fancy about it.
I'm the director of engineering, planning, and development for Edgewood Properties. I've been with Edgewood Properties for eighteen years. I've appeared before this board on this application as well as the planning board.
If you could give the board the overview of the site, if you could, what we're asking for in perspective, not only with respect to the amended site plan and the location of the basement space we're requesting, but also then to orient us with the signage associated with Starbucks.
Sure. First, I'll start off with the previously approved residential building. It's a shape, E-shaped building located in the back. What we're proposing to do is, in each leg, if you will, is to propose a small area for storage only, and a larger area under the bottom leg here, for a total of, I think, sixteen thousand four ninety? Sixteen, sixteen thousand nine fifty-one. And again, as indicated, when we originally applied to the city, there was plans that were submitted that showed some other uses down there, as Mr. Patterson indicated. That's been removed. It's no longer part of the plan. As we testified to, at that point, it's not, it's for a jolly. Again, as Mr. Kelso indicated, no change to the footprint of the building. It's strictly internal. It just allows us to bring the elevator and the stairwell down to the basement level so we can utilize it for storage. We find in most of our rental communities, storage becomes an issue for our tenants. So we like to provide it as we can. So that's why we're handing it to this here. Again, we had appeared before the TSC committee and wanted, since we're coming back for the signage anyway, throw it on there so the board's aware of it and make a clean record of it. As it relates to Starbucks, again, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, I want to just reference to the plan I pointed to entitled amended overall site plan, sheet three of six of your packet with revision date of seven twelve seventeen. That shows the overall site. The other board that's up for the use called amended site and geometry plan. Again, sheet four of six of your packet dated June fifth, two thousand and seventeen. That shows a blow-up of the Starbucks building itself. As Mr. Kelso indicated, when we initially submitted, we're seeking a variance for a third pylon sign. By ordinance, this property is entitled to two pylon signs. There was the existing movie theater sign. There was a Dave's Barbecue sign located in the island here. And we were going to propose the third sign. Since that time, Dave's Barbecue has vacated, so we're eliminating the second sign in the island and just proposing a second sign here. I would like to make it clear that at the time of submission on the plans, it was shown as a potential of two tenants on that sign. Since the elimination of Dave's Barbecue, we won't increase the size of the sign. Just may have to put another tenant on there for the former Dave's Barbecue space. So the overall square footage we're seeking remains the same as it applied for. It just may have three tenants instead of two tenants. Again, as Mr. Kelso indicated, Starbucks branding. Their typical request for a prototypical building is to have signage on all four sides. I'll let the planner give you the testimony about the proofs and the need for it. But to be familiar with the Starbucks signage, they do have multiple signs. And although they're not large, again, the ordinance only provides one per facade and one per front of the facade. Because of the building's unique location, I think it's important, and Starbucks thinks it's important to get facade signage on all four. We have two hundred and fifty-six residential units in the back. We have two restaurants, plus you have all the movie theater people that may come out of the driveway and want to see the signage here. You have the visibility as you approach heading south number one. And then for the person who may want to head up and down and make a U-turn, you have facade signage here on the front and on the side here. So that's the facade signage, again, indicated on, this is architectural concept plan, A-one point oh one of your packet dated March third, first, two thousand and seventeen. There's a chart on there that talks about the number of signs, where they're located, the overall square footage. And again, Mr. O'Shea will go into the proofs for the variance, but they're not large signs that take a large portion of the side. So you see, you have your typical insignia logo located here, the Starbucks branding, and then the drive-through direction to show, indicate people where to get to the drive-through. The other signage, as indicated, is, there's again, a insignia sign in the window and then a drive-through sign. These are typical signs for Starbucks as well as the several. These are typical signs for Starbucks, as well as several directional signs to get the people who come in off of the driveway by the theater, it directs you around to the drive-through. And if you miss the main entrance and you come into the secondary entrance, again, it shows you how to navigate around the parking lot to get to the drive-through, so you don't make a quick right-in, and you've got to circle around and find it all day. Gives you a better idea to keep the traffic flowing, so people aren't trying to guess where the drive-through is. And that's basically what we're here to see tonight.
I made mention with regard to the clearance bars and menu boards, that's also part of...
Yeah, as indicated, we found recently that a lot of towns and municipalities don't have specific signage requirements for drive-throughs, specifically related to clearance bar, or the headache bar we call it, the menu board, pre-menu board. So we've taken the opportunity, and we've noticed for all those signs, because they're not specifically listed in the ordinance, and again, if you're familiar with it, you have a clearance bar, so there's text on the clearance bar, it tells you what the height is, there's a pre-menu board, then you've got the full menu board as you get closer to the Starbucks itself. And again, those details are in your packet. It's a typical menu board, a five-panel menu board, a pre-menu board. But again, because it's not specifically mentioned in the ordinance, we apply for the variance.
I got other questions, Mr. Allenbach.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. This time, I recall, Mr. Justin Ossiala, if you could.
Can you read your right-hand state names, state license name, please?
Name's Justin Ossiala, A U C I E L L O.
And can you sort of...
Yes, I do.
Mr. Ossiala, you are a licensed professional planner at State of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I'm licensed since two thousand seven.
So, excuse me, you've been before this board?
Yes, many times.
Have your qualifications changed?
So have they.
Okay, well, it's up to us next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ossiala, you've heard the testimony from Mr. Allenbach, who's sitting here, of course.
Sure.
And he's identified the variances that are associated specifically with signage.
Correct.
And he's identified various, the various variances that are required, both in number of signs and locations.
Correct.
If you could, please, could you just run through the analysis of those signage variances, and then if you would rather we ask the specific questions, you can give us the benefit of your analysis, and hopefully your support and proof for approval.
Yes, absolutely. So I won't, you know, leave with the point of the variances, but you did hear from Mr. Allenbach, the variances required. Certainly, from a planning standpoint, I see this as a C-one and a C-two situation. Now, as you're aware, a C-one argument rests on hardship. Now, while I don't see it as a hardship per se, I think that the unique location of this property coming south out of Edison on one, across New Brunswick, does present somewhat of a hardship in that a motorist needs to be able to see the property, number one, and number two, needs to be able to see a Starbucks. If the exterior of the Starbucks and the property, they need the visibility as the car is traveling across the bridge, they need to be able to see that there's some sort of beacon, okay? And because you don't want a motorist to make a sudden movement and come into the property in a, you know, unsafe manner. So with respect to the multiple facade signs, those signs do serve as a beacon. And I think, again, by virtue of the Starbucks's, you know, location on the property, and also by virtue of the property itself being located adjacent to the Rapperton River, and also being located, you know, right after the Bridgefront of Edison, that does present a C-one hardship. With respect to the number of signs and the type of signs that are proposed in this application, you heard testimony from Mr. Allenbach, which speaks to, the signs are not obtrusive with respect to the overall, you know, square footage of the building. These signs are for identification purposes, not just for the motorists, but also for the people that are on the property, that are coming from the movie theater, that are coming from the residential area. So when you're looking at it in the exhibit, you do see that they are actually quite minimal, you know, with respect to the facade itself. With respect to the miscellaneous signs that are on the property, those also serve for visibility and a safety purpose, especially with respect to the sign that allows a motorist to safely traverse the site to access the drive-through lane. So I would say that the granting of these variances, certainly the, you know, benefits of these variances do outweigh any detriment. They do advance the MLU purpose of providing for a free flow of traffic. Certainly, these are attractive signs. These signs do mesh well with the building facade and architectural features, so there is a creative design techniques that are included here as well. And certainly, there is, you know, sufficient space for these signs on the facade itself. So when weighing the positive and negative criteria, in this instance, the benefits of granting these variances for the sign do outweigh any detriment. I don't see really any detriment at all. I certainly don't see a substantial detriment. These signs are, you know, industry standard for Starbucks. These signs are intended to provide for visibility to motorists and also the pedestrians that come onto the property as well. So with respect to the zone plan and zoning ordinance, there is no detriment. This is a highway commercial zone. This is a zone where this type of use is permitted, and certainly, this is the type of use that does require a sufficient amount of signs with respect to the grant itself. So with that, the benefits of granting these, in my opinion, quite benign sign variances do outweigh any detriment to the same.
Thank you, Mr. Ossiala.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Just one matter of clarification. With Mr. Bignell's report, the planning review that he had provided, and we've had contact with Mr. Bignell, he had identified a building height variance and also a maximum appurviance coverage variance. We were able to ascertain and make contact with Mr. Bignell at the date. In fact, the previous coverage had not changed from what had previously been approved, and also that the building height variance, in fact, had been approved previously. And Mr. Bignell, I think you can acknowledge that, but he did acknowledge that in his email.
That's true, that's true.
Okay.
So we didn't want any confusion, because we didn't identify them, and we didn't testify for them, because they really didn't exist for us.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. And that completes our presentation.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak to this application?
Charlie, can you read your right-hand state names, state license name, please?
Charles Cradle, C R A T O V I L.
Can you sort of repeat this better?
Yes, I do. Being once again members of the board, thanks for the opportunity to address you. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, community newspaper. I'm mostly interested in what the timetable is on this project. When might these, you know, apartments and/or Starbucks open?
The sidewalk has already started on the Starbucks, the pavement, the site, some of the utilities are built there. The apartment building has been stalled, if you will, while we waited for the outcome to see if we get the basements, because obviously, if we dig the foundation, we want to include the basement, we should be so, and get this approval. If not, we're going to commence construction immediately.
So either way, you'll start soon?
Absolutely.
And when might, how long might construction take, a year or two?
Well, the multifamily building is going to take several years, the build stages. But we generally, our rule of thumb is about a hundred units a year, as indicated, it's two hundred and fifty-six units, so somewhere between two and two-and-a-half-year build-out for that building itself. The Starbucks, we're delivering a pad, Starbucks builds our own building, so I would imagine that, I can't say why they wouldn't be open later this year.
Okay. And I heard Finnis Davis closed the course. Was part of the plan to replace it, or is it just going to be paved over?
Well, we received our original approval, as I indicated, on the overall site plan. Then restaurants to remain. It'll just be a new tenant.
Okay. All right, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? See, no one will close the public portion of the meeting. Mr. Patterson?
Chair, according to the recommendations, yes, the following conditions apply. Appliance in terms of the B and R Engineering Report dated June twentieth, two thousand seventeen, submission of all necessary easements and/or cross-access experience reviewed by the attorney and city engineer, part of the final, the same. Paying of site performance bond amount to be viewed and approved by the city engineer. Submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspections amount to be backlaid percent of Title sixteen, twenty-four, one sixty. Paying of all sewer action fees pursuant to Title thirteen oh four and thirteen oh eight. Issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required. Appliance in terms of the Bignell Consulting Group Report dated August twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. Plenty of resco fund if all anticipated post-improvement reviews. Paying of any other fees due to the city in New Brunswick related to development that were used to the project. Paying of all outstanding taxes and sewer fees, middle-sized county plenty board approval with waiver, and freehold soil conservation district approval with waiver. Submit engineering plans to comply with any changes required by the planning and engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing, and the same with the architectural plans, submit them if they are required to comply with the planning and engineering memos or any plan amendments offered here at the hearing. And the applicant shall comply with all the conditions set forth in Application Z two thousand fourteen dash oh three. I'll make a motion to approve. One second.
Doug Chee.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
Ivan Adorna.
Yes.
Chris Caparo.
Yes.
Sue McGillicuddy.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Anthony Capo.
Yes.
James Beganna. Z dash two zero one seven dash zero five, variance application for the construction of a two-family dwelling located at fifty Bartlett Street, Lot seventy-four, Lot twenty-nine point zero one, zoning District R dash five A.
Members of the board, Thomas F. Kelso on behalf of the applicant, James Beganna. This is an application for a series of variances associated with the construction of a two-family residence. As the board is aware, one- and two-family dwellings are not subject to site plan approval. However, because we're building one of the variances, we need to come before the board, seeking your approval of the variances. In order to actually do that, we need to essentially present a site plan application for you, but we'll do try to do that, you know, in a condensed version, because you need to have an understanding of the building, the architectural, the layout of the site plan in order to get an idea of whether or not the variances are appropriate. Again, there are a series of bulk variances primarily that are associated with the size of the lot. I don't want to upset anyone. And there is one D variance, which is a floor area ratio variance. Again, all of these variances, in our view, are based upon the fact that the existing lot is a five thousand square foot lot versus a seventy-five hundred or eighty-five hundred square foot lot. Those variants are lot size, as I've indicated, the lot width, building coverage, minimum one yard setback, the combined side yard setback, an appurviance coverage variance, and then a parking variance for one parking space. And that is essentially what the application is involved. I will present the typical witnesses you would see, engineer, architect, and the planner, but we'll try to do it in a condensed version. And while I won't ask him to testify, Mr. Beganna, the applicant is here, very interested in the outcome, of course. With that as an overview, I would call, as my first witness, Mr. Brent Pappy.
Read your right-hand state names, please.
Brent Pappy, P A P I.
I do.
Before you begin, I just want to make sure that no one on this board has any comments for this application. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pappy, you are a licensed professional engineer in the State of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
In that capacity, you provided engineering site planning for the proposed two-family dwelling.
That's correct.
Could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Yes, I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers College of Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the State of New Jersey. I'm a certified interdisciplinary engineer in the State of New Jersey. I've been practicing for over nineteen years. I've testified before various boards throughout the state, mostly on order at East Point Engineering.
Thank you. We'll look back to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Pappy, if you could, I'm going to ask you to run through a quick overview of the engineering components of the plan, and if you can, please, I think it's helpful for the board to orient them with respect to the variances that are being requested, particularly as you relate to the bulk size of the lot.
Can you just talk the board a little bit, Mr. Hive, which I think is quite interesting on the...
That's what I meant, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Been there for everybody here?
Yes.
Okay. This is a color rendering of the site plan and general note sheet two of four for fifty Bartlett Street. It's, the exhibit that you're looking at here in this left-hand viewport, it references...
Do you want to mark that anymore?
This exhibit references a boundary and topographic survey with some existing conditions prepared by Landmark Survey. It's for the project site known as Block seventy-four, Lot twenty-nine point zero one. It's at the southern side of Bartlett Street. Bartlett Street's right here at the top of the page. Site's located within the R five A zoning district, the single-family and two-family zoning district. It's bordered by Lincoln Elementary School to the southwest, and other residential buildings to the east and southeast. Bartlett Street's to the north. The subject property has a fifty-foot frontage along Bartlett Street and a total area of five thousand square feet. This lot was previously developed with a three-story residential dwelling that we understand was demolished around two thousand and twelve. The applicant's proposing to construct a new two-story, two-family dwelling, shown here in beige, right here on the center of the lot. The total floor area is three thousand four hundred and twenty-two square feet, and it also, the plan also incorporates a paved access drive right off of Bartlett Street leading to three paved parking spaces toward the rear. They're right, one, two, and three, right here. That's the paved drive. In addition, the applicant proposes to relocate an existing tree at the property frontage, it's located right here at the driveway, he's locating it right here. He's proposing some shrub plantings along the front of the building, a refuse area at the back, AC units toward the back. All the utilities are proposed to be connected directly off of Bartlett Street where there's existing public water and public sewer. The proposed electric service is to be buried underground from a local utility pole to the building. The natural grade of the property, it slopes from back to front. We're pretty much maintaining those grades with the proposed parking lot, and by the suggestion of the city engineer, we're proposing a trench string at the front of the driveway which will discharge via pipe to the curb at Bartlett Street. That's to prevent water from flowing across the curb. In addition to that, we're putting new sidewalk and curb in along the frontage to facilitate the utility installations. Lastly, I'd like to mention, there is an existing retaining wall and fence along the southwestern lot line. It belongs to the Lincoln Elementary School, and it just slightly encroaches into the property. The applicant would like to maintain the wall and fence rather than demolishing it and trying to relocate it, so we're proposing a five-foot wide access easement for the wall to remain in place.
If I might just sort of clarify that, it was our feeling that rather than go back to the Board of Education and tell them that their fence is afoot on our property, we'd rather let sleeping dogs lie, then contact with Mr. Hendricks, who represents the school board. It's a better situation to allow that just to remain the way it is, and that's why we're proposing to provide that easement for the school board.
To the variances, the applicant's request of following variances with site plan approval. Lot size, where eight thousand square feet is required and five thousand square feet exists. Lot width, where eighty foot is required and fifty feet exists. Again, that's a part of the frontage. Building coverage, where twenty percent is permitted and twenty-nine percent is proposed. Appurviance surface, where fifty percent max is permitted and seventy-four point four percent is proposed. The side yard setback, where fifteen feet is required and five feet is proposed. This is where along the southwest really going here. Combined side yard setback, where twenty-five feet is required and twenty feet is proposed. Floor area ratio, where point three five is required and point six eight is proposed. Floor area ratio, where .35 is required and .68 is proposed. And off-street parking, where four spaces are required for RSIS and three spaces are proposed. We have a planner here that'll provide proofs to those variances. In addition to that, we will, we've read in thoroughly the planning and engineering review comment letters and will comply with all their comments. And the applicant plans to obtain Freehold Soil Conservation District approval if he happens to get approved tonight.
I have no further questions, Mr. Papi.
Is there anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will call Mr. George Sincox for testimony.
That's a problem? Yeah, it's, 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 I'm going to get it except for it's a little smaller.
No, actually, yeah, we're going to need to do it. I didn't know if the engineer designed it or the architect designed it.
I think it was the architect who was standing there. It's the architect. Raise your right hand, state your names by your last name, please.
George Sincox, that's S-I-N-C-O-X.
Can you swear the truth in this matter?
I do.
Mr. Sincox, you hear before this board, have your credentials changed since the last time?
No, they haven't.
Okay, well, accept you as a candidate.
Thank you. As the engineer just started to point out, the biggest problem we had as architects in dealing with this project was the severe undersized lot and severe, mostly in lot width. We have a lot that's roughly 60% of what's required on the site. And that in and of itself creates design issues that we try to deal with in terms of maintaining scale, you know, use of materials and keeping the building in order with the rest of the neighborhood and hopefully trying to improve the appearance of the neighborhood as well. The entire neighborhood, except for our house that's that we diagonally cross, are generally two stories, about the same scale as we've got here, somewhat simpler, I think. We have a brick and a hardy board building with some white trim. Again, we've got to work for you, and this is typical of what that is. We try and do a little detailing that makes it a little bit special in the neighborhood. We have here two stories, two, they're identical stories, three bedrooms. The bedrooms, again, aren't oversized, and again, that creates some of the problem with the coverage. But we've got a master bedroom that's about 180 square feet. We have two other bedrooms of about 150 square feet and about 390 square feet of common area. Modest, not overdesigned, you know, not oversized. So what we designed is, I think, probably about as good as we can do considering the severity of the undersized lot. We have typical materials on the inside that used to see, they used to see pretty much all the time, first hardwood floors, granite countertops, third in the kitchen, hardboard cabinets, you know, that sort of thing. It's, again, it's a slightly upscale kind of a design and materials that we use. In this particular case, what we have in terms of HVAC units are we have two units, one for each floor. We've got a basement below where we've got a wash, actually, two washers, two dryers, which can be accessed from both units through the common stair, which is out front. We have down there also the mechanical system, the heating and cooling system, which is going to be forced there for the first floor. The second floor is up in the attic, which you can access through a pull-down stair in their hallway. Again, it's, you have the plans in front of you, you see what the hardships are and the variances that we're requesting. But that's our solution to it, and I think we actually worked it out fairly well.
I have no further questions, Mr. Sincox.
Is there anyone else? Thank you.
At this time, I will call Ms. Allison Coffin for testimony.
Here, let me take that. Raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last name.
Allison Coffin, CEO of-
And you swear the truth in this matter?
Thank you.
I have, it's been a while.
I haven't torn up my license yet.
Okay, so now you're a good candidate.
Yes. Still a licensed professional planner, still certified by the American Institute of Certified Planner, nothing's changed.
Okay, and we will accept you as a candidate.
Thank you.
Scott, if you then could, rather than me asking specific questions, if you could go through an analysis of how you went about approaching the view of these variances and the analysis you've done and conclusions you've reached with regard, hopefully, to justification for each.
Sure. We have a somewhat interesting situation tonight. We have a use that's permitted. We do require a D variance for FAR. But all of the variance relief derives from the size of the lot, which is a conforming lot for a different use, but not for this use. So what I did is I wanted to take a look at the character of the area. So this is, I looked at 200 feet from, I don't think it's been, do I need to mark this?
D3.
D3? So it shows the character of the surrounding area.
What we call an existing use.
It's existing uses within 200 feet of the subject site. So I looked at those uses within 200 feet. There are 34 separate lots in that area. We've got, one of them contains a public use here, the school. And another lot up here is a mixed use, got a restaurant and residences. And we've got a multifamily lot with 23 apartments. The remainder of the lots have residential uses of varying intensities. We've got two three-family dwellings. Those were, I swear it's orange, but I went and I hash-marked it because it looks the same as the red here and here. We've got three family. All of the red are two-family lots, and the remaining lots are single-family dwellings. So clearly, a two-family dwelling is not an eat typical use for this area, it's appropriate for the area. But we're really looking at whether or not the lot size for that two-family provides an appropriate population density and meets the character of this area. So within that 200 feet, there are zero two-family homes on conforming lots. There are no 8,000 square foot lots with two-family homes. There are six two-family homes that are on lots the exact same size as the subject site. And there are eight two-family homes on lots that are smaller. So my conclusion as a planner is that, you know, if we look at it in total, this application advances the purposes of the municipal land use law with regard to providing an appropriate population density and concentration, which would advance the well-being of persons, this neighborhood, the community, and the region. The FAR falls in large part from this size of the lot, which is undersized. But when we're looking at FAR, we're also looking at whether or not the lot can accommodate the proposed intensity. It's my opinion, in this case, it does. We do need some bulk variances, they do make sense. So the FAR on this lot is appropriate, given the size of the lot. The bulk variances can also be granted without detriment. The lot area and width variances are due to the existing dimensions of the lot, and there's no additional land available to increase the size of the slot, all the surrounding properties are developed. The proposed coverage variances are necessary to provide the support for this use, but they're also appropriate when you're scaling it down to this size lot. The ordinance permits a 20% building coverage for this use on an 8,000 square foot lot. And that would allow for a 1,600 square foot building footprint. The proposed building coverage, 27% on a 5,000 square foot lot, is a 1,350 square foot footprint, which is smaller than the maximum the zone intends for a two-family use on a conforming lot. The ordinance provides a 50% coverage for impervious coverage on an 8,000 square foot lot or 4,000 square feet. For this lot, with a proposed 74% impervious coverage on a 5,000 square foot lot, is 3,720 square feet. So the impervious coverage that's provided for this use is less than what the ordinance would permit on a conforming lot. So looking at it as a planner, this tells me that the amount of coverage and the size of the building are appropriate for the use, notwithstanding the size of the lot. And then we have some side yard setback relief that's required. This also, of course, derives from the width of the existing parcel. If the lot had 80 feet of width rather than 50 feet of width, the side yard setbacks would conform. But beyond that, this lot has a unique situation in that it's adjacent to a public piece of land that's developed with the school. It has open space, so what the applicant did was move the building closer to that lot line so there's no impact on the light, air, and open space of the adjacent residents. The last variance we have is for parking. We're proposing three spaces, and the RSIS would require four. Now, the RSIS doesn't allow the board to consider the availability of on-street parking. There is on-street parking only available in the area. When I went to visit the site, there was ample on-street parking, which I was kind of surprised to see. But there is one space available in front of the parcel which could be counted towards that four parking space requirement. So in my opinion, that variance relief could be granted. So looking at it overall, there's no substantial detriment that would result from the variances. It does not substantially impair the intended purpose of the master plan of the zoning ordinance as the use is permitted and appropriate for this neighborhood, nor would it result in any harm to the general welfare of the public.
I have any questions for the applicant?
Is there anyone else?
I do. So you are going to request permit parking or on-street parking for one?
I think that is the intent.
Yes.
That's the intent?
No, no. Are you offering that as a mitigation to give up? So is that what I just heard?
No, I, well, what they would be entitled to is war.
And I don't think you're giving up anything, right? I have some problems with the testimony there. I mean, if you were there looking at it in the last month, Rutgers is not in session, there is a ton of parking up there. You'll come back, you come back next week, there will not be a parking spot within multiple blocks. However, this is not a huge parking variance that you're requesting. There is a, I don't want to give you your guys' testimony, but the millennial generation we have at Rutgers now has, uses cars a lot less than my generation did and so forth. I don't think it's a huge stretch to grant a parking variance for one space. But I know I jump a little bit, I remember saying that there was ample parking in the area. Just quickly. So I don't, I don't think it's a huge parking variance.
So I just want to clarify that. So you are going to seek a parking permit for one car?
No, no, we will wait.
They're going to have a regular parking permit which allows two-
Correct.
Permanent passes if only, if none of the cars are registered at that, you know, our New Jersey license, at that location. They'd also be eligible for, I believe, two visitor passes, two visitor passes also.
So is it one parking pass per family or per unit?
The beach apartment gets three, up to three permanent resident passes. If, if not all of the residents there have their cars registered at that location, if they have them registered at their home location, you know, it's registered in Woodbridge or wherever, they can only get two, so that there's, it depends on how they're registered, how many they might get there. And then, I believe, each unit, Bruce probably knows better than me, each unit gets a visitor pass or the building gets one?
The building gets two.
Building gets two passes. It would be the standard that everybody else on the block?
Uh huh.
Same thing, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
That completes our presentation.
Okay. At this time, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here from the public? Please come forward.
Bruce, could you raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last name for me, please?
My name is Bruce Ai, and my last name is Ai.
And do you swear the truth in this matter?
Yes, I do. Basically, I just have a few questions to clarify my understanding of their design. And do I understand correctly, you will have seven people in each unit? And both units are identical layout? Six, six in each unit. Six, but you have two 150 rooms and one 180 room. So you should be allowed seven? Six.
Three is six.
Right now, you're applying a sec. Yeah, well, not too many people like to have three people in a room. Okay, and I did notice you have, the lot, you have, well, the roof was 50% of per- per- per view space you can have, and you have 70 somewhat percent. And what is, besides the building itself, is that the parking spot?
Parking. Parking park.
Okay, so you have about 25% of grass and more. Okay, that's my question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chris Clark, was that offering mitigation to limit the occupancy to six persons?
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Does the board have any other questions? Mr. Patterson?
I would suggest the following conditions. Compliance with the Terms of the City Engineering Report dated August 28th, 2017. Assuming of all easements and or cross-access agreements reviewed and approved by the board attorney and the city engineer prior to filing the same. Pay of a site performance bond amount to be viewed and approved by the city engineer. Assuming of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees amount to be calculated pursuant to Title 1624160. Payable water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Title 1304 and 1308. Issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required. Compliance with the Terms of the City Planning Report dated August 25th, 2017. Paying any other fees to the city of Brunswick related to the development or use of the project. Paying any outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. Freehold Soil Conservation District approval with waiver saying. And the applicant, as a mitigation on the parking variance, is going to limit the occupancy of each unit to six persons maximum.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make one. Who was that? I think you answered the same question. I'll say. Doug Shin?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ivan Dornak?
Yes.
Trey Sciparo?
Yes.
Sue McGalaght?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
Mance Capole?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other candidates? Okay, seeing none, motion to adjourn. All in favor?